Welcome to the December 2nd Eugene Water Electric Board, Board of Commissioner Meeting. Board Meeting. My name is John Borowski. I'm president this year. We, I want to, we're going to do an agenda check here. Anybody on the board have any additions or changes to the agenda? I'm just going to make an announcement. If some of you people are looking at, at our agenda and see that our public hearing on the upcoming budget isn't in conjunction with the actual top space in the agenda that we're going to be going through and discussing that. We did that for a reason, so we would have a time certain for people to call in. We've had in the past where we were ahead of schedule by fifteen or twenty minutes and we didn't want to not have people be able to give public comment. So that's why we bumped it up to the beginning of the meeting. So the way that our agenda will go, after we go through items from boards and general managers and our correspondents, it'll go to the public hearing for our budget. And then it will go into public, general public comments. So just for people who are watching at home or in the room, that's the reason why the agenda has been flip flopped a little bit. So with that, we'll move on to item number two, which is in items from board members and general manager. We'll start here with Sonia and go around. John, I will always call on you after the other four and then before myself.
I do. Just for the record, I'm starting to lose the audio quite a bit. So if it's, you know, I'll do my best to stay engaged. But as the evening goes on, the internet gets worse where I am. The only thing I had to report is I attended the OPEC meeting and long story short, the Employee Benefits Program is in good health and it's in good stewardship and nothing but good things to report. I think our capital contribution will be lower this year than it has been in years past. And Deborah can elaborate if she'd like.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do need to.
Plan is, is well funded and that does mean a reduction in EWEB's contribution in the coming year.
Lovely. Okay, Sonia.
I just wanted to appreciate Frank Lawson came and talked to the Eugene Rotary today and wanted to thank him for doing that. Thank you for coming out to the Rotary.
Mindy. For myself, I attended the Mackenzie Watershed Council meeting last month. It was quite an interesting meeting. We had a presentation from a couple of grad students at Oregon State University and a project manager for the HJ Andrews Forest, which is a forest up the McKenzie that was severely burned by the 2023 Lookout Fire. So it was a research forest that has been doing ongoing research for well over twenty years. And they got burned. And so now these grad students came and are starting to work on how the forest is recovering. So there were areas that were hotspots that burned and there were some that weren't quite as hot. And so they're doing research on how this forest is going to recover after the, after the burn. It was, it was quite interesting. So that's going on up there. And then the other thing that I'll put out there is, and I'll probably put this at the end of the meeting as well. This Friday, downtown Eugene, there's going to be a tree lighting ceremony where in Keyzee Square, kind of like Rockefeller Center's tree lighting, it's, it's like that. And it was done with cooperation from EWEB, they, the Chamber of Commerce, Sierra Pacific found a big tree out in their, in their woods that they donated. And so it's five o'clock on Friday, the fifth. If you want to be there, it should be a fun time. I think that, well, I don't know if any of the Today Show people will be there, but I know I'll be down there for the tree lighting. So that's all I have. Frank?
Yep. President Borowski, Commissioners, good evening. Just one thing on my list this evening. And while it seems like it was just yesterday, it was actually a year ago this week that we launched our new customer information system and our new finance system. I do want to commend staff for not just launching it like they did. It was, it was a significant effort to replace a system that was originally put in in the nineteen nineties and modernizing that, but also the dedication to continue to improve it throughout this year. We didn't just launch it and forget it. We have decided to continue to improve it. And that's where a lot of our, our effort recently has gone. And so I want to thank, thank staff and our partners for doing that. And I think we have either are approaching or have surpassed over a million transactions during that time. And so really very significant and important system for us and a building block for some of the things we want to do in the future. So thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President sounds too official. Sir, President Borowski, how's that? I'm not sure if that's a compliment or, or not. So.
Okay. All right. With that, we will move on to correspondence. We had quite a robust correspondence package sent to us. Does anybody have questions or comments on what we received in correspondence?
Yeah, just a initial, these were all informational items, many of which the board has requested. One particular note on our operational report, this was based on our new EWEB business management system. And so it broke the report into two primary sections. One was a report on KPIs and how we are performing in our core work. That's really keeping the lights on, the water flowing, the information flowing, the money flowing and all the, the various ways that we track our reliability and our workforce. And then the other part was a report on the annual goals and how they relate to our strategic themes that we've built for the next three to five years. We are, well, eighteen seems like a lot of goals. We're on track with fifteen. We've completed one. And there are two that are slightly behind schedule. And so really feel good about the, the, the report itself. It is a different format. So I wanted to, to thank some people for, for that, in particular Holly and then Kelly Hale and then our managers for working under a different kind of format, which is the reason it took an extra month. But now we'll use that same format for the basis for the year end report, which will be gathering the data January and February and then report back to the board and the community really on the state of the utility in March. Really want to thank staff for that.
Great. Questions or comments on correspondence? Sonia?
I just had one comment on the officer and liaison positions. I've been the ElCog representative, I think, for the last six years. Anyway, enough to have gone through a cycle of being the vice president and then currently the president. And I, I think I would like to offer that up as an opportunity for somebody else who's interested to be involved in that organization. So I just wanted to put that out there as we're thinking about that for next month.
Me, Tim, John Brown?
Sorry, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah. As for myself, yeah, look at the, look at the positions that are available for next, next month, because we'll be wanting to redo those. So if there's things that interest you or you see that Sonia is ready to move on from ElCog, let's just kind of think about where, where your interest lies. I know that John Brown is just loving that OPEC one too much. So don't try and take that from him. But other than that, great job on the correspondence. There was a lot in there, a lot of, of, of good information for people that are watching online. It is all available on our website for you guys to go in and read if you want to geek out like all of us.
Right. Yeah, Commissioners, one thing that, that was not in correspondence, but that I will be asking you about in our one-on-one sessions is typically in January, we reiterate the board-appointed consultants. We're not doing a formal survey in, in this year, but it'll be, if you have comments or suggestions that you would like to, to share with me, I can pass that on to staff or we can have further discussions in January. But we're moving away from the unproductive commissioner-hated survey that we've done in, in the past. And so if you want to provide feedback, I'll be available to meet with you next week.
Okay. All right. With that, we are ahead of schedule. Yeah, as always, as far as our public, we tried to get it on, you know, move it up as far as we could. I am going to read the preamble. Well, no, that's for the public. I think we'll just go ahead and open the public hearing. And if somebody comes in later, we will be happy to have them hear it. So.
President Borowski?
Yeah.
You, you could do general testimony first, followed by.
All right. We'll do it that way. I'm gonna make a adjustment on the fly and we're gonna do general public input by telephone or in person. So I'll read this. Welcome to the, to the public input session for this meeting. EWEB is a public, non-for-profit organization whose charter is to deliver drinking water and electricity to our community. Although this forum is not used for an open back and forth dialogue, commissioners and staff value hearing diverse perspectives and receiving community input. Speakers are asked to keep their testimony relevant to EWEB business and request that everyone share their comments in a productive and respectful manner. Should speakers or audience members become disruptive, they may be muted and/or removed from the building. When your name is called, you'll have three minutes to provide your comment. The public session is now open. Okay. And we will start. Did we get more that came in afterwards? Okay. We did have one person that signed up to call in on the phone. We haven't received them yet. So we will start with Tana Shepherd and then move on to Chris Jones.
Hey, people, it's me, Tana Shepherd, also known as Eco Chick, and I'm with Ward Eight. And I'm here, I'm happy to start the comment with gratitude for EWEB. I think this is my first time being here this school year. It's been kind of a hectic start, but we're, we're rolling. We just finished our salmon field trips, which are wildly successful. Lots of salmon in Lake Creek this year, which was really phenomenal for our students, third and fourth graders out there. We have our salmon release trips next week, starting on the eighth, and they go through that Friday. Every day at the park there at Cuthbert, at the tree garden, we do a game and we release the salmon. The board is more than welcome to just stop on by. It's a revolving door field trip that every hour we have another group coming and we just roll that through. We've worked with about eleven hundred students this year. We have fifty-three classrooms participating, which is pretty solid. And yeah, I'd also, I do have a couple notes. Hang on, I wasn't super prepared. I also enjoyed being at the Kennedy Emergency Water Ribbon Cutting. And so it was really cool to see Miriam there with you and, and knowing that's right where I work, that's where my building is. So that's pretty neat to have that right there and be able to do some education around that. Also, just moving into the new year, we're looking into the EV challenge. So we have it scheduled already for June second. It'll be at the Lane Events Center again. This year, the cool thing is we have a new science curriculum in middle school and it works perfectly with eighth grade. So every eighth grade student will be participating in 4J along with across the county. They even threw out a whole unit to, to the EV unit instead, which is really nice. The wind energy is out also, and we're having more seventh grade teachers participate with that, which is really great. And then we'll launch into some different climate, you know, activities with the students. Just a little heads up. At, at the state level, we've had a climate education bill pass and it goes into effect in January, which is really great for the work that we're doing. I was actually a big part of passing that. I'm in an outside group that worked on that. So it's kind of, we'll be piloting some things in 4J and that goes really nicely with some of the mission work with EWEB. So thank you, thank you again for funding a great program and serving some of these students across the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Jones, followed by Alfredo.
Good evening, Commissioners, General Manager Lawson. The story starts out scary, but it's got a happy ending. So hold on. I came here in March twenty twenty-five to light a bit of a fire under you in reference to an ice storm that happened in January of twenty twenty-four. I can, the time's up.
We don't want to hear.
Fast three minutes.
Anything to do with ice storm.
All right. I told you it had a happy ending.
Okay.
So during that ice storm, some tree branches, as you may recall from my previous story, sagged into some power lines that unfortunately are EWEB power lines and started a fire and pieces of burning tree branches dropped onto my neighbor's roof for about an hour. We got visits from the fire department. We got visits from EWEB troubleshooters. It was, it was, it wasn't great. The troubleshooters safely turned off the power eventually to fourteen hundred houses and they were without power for about twelve hours on a freezing cold night. The whole situation was avoidable. The root cause was a vegetation management contract that EWEB had with a single homeowner that prevented EWEB from cutting back the trees that were near the distribution lines to the normal safe standard. So a bunch of us neighbors complained to EWEB staff and they said they were working on it and nothing really happened that we could see. So I came to complain in March. I have learned from Ken Baldwin, the Enterprise Risk Management Supervisor, that a couple of weeks ago, EWEB reached a settlement with this homeowner that basically vacates this unfortunate vegetation management agreement. And it will, after a few years of transition, the agreement will no longer be in force. So I came back, because I don't like to only come to complain. I came back to say thank you. Thank you for working on this. The contract was in force for almost twenty years. And I know when I was working here, it was a source of much, much frustration for vegetation management staff or troubleshooters, for a variety of folks. So I want to say thank you for making this happen, for making, for coming to a settlement. And I want to name some specific people who I know worked on this. Ken Baldwin, as I said, who was a great communicator during the whole ordeal. Sarah Gorsegner, who I know is here, the Business Continuity Manager, Shane Tennyson and the aptly named Ed Woody, who work in vegetation management. Tyler Nice, the Electric Operations Manager. Some electrical crews who came to install some localized disconnect equipment so that the vegetation management could happen without knocking out power to fourteen hundred houses. And I know there were dozens and dozens of other staff who produced data, produced documents, made phone calls, stood there on the sidewalk and talked to this homeowner while other people did the vegetation management work. People who no longer work for EWEB because this has been a problem for twenty years. So thank you to all of these people. And last but not least, from the law firm of Louvast Cobb, Eric DeFries and Karen Anderson. I know maybe lawyers don't get a lot of thanks and hurrahs in this forum or pretty much anywhere. But I know that they took on what was always described to me as an impossible task and they did a great job with it. So thank you. That one's for real. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Alfredo.
What's my last name?
Gormozano.
So I am back again. And again, it's one of those, these old tired, worn out subjects, probably to your ears, but not to mine, because I'm living with it. The other night I was wondering, why is it that when I take a nap in my bedroom, I wake up and feel groggy and off balance? And when I take a nap in my living room, I don't. And then it hit me, that smart meter is right next to my head, pretty much on the outside of my bedroom wall. It's not even broadcasting, but this is what I'm feeling. And I'm not the only person that's having these effects. Now, we can look in our computers and look at statistics and basically find the statistics to prove anything we want to have proven. But there's something called human experience. And I know a lot of times it gets belittled and put down as anecdotal evidence, and somehow that's not valid. But what are statistics other than a lot of anecdotal evidences? A lot of people saying a certain thing. We're coming to the same findings. So in our case, where there's so many of us who have come to you for so long about these smart meters and about the possible effects and now effects that I'm actually seeing, I wasn't even thinking about the meter when I came up with that. You know, it just, oh my God, it's right next to my head. That's probably why I'm feeling so junky in, after a nap. So I really, really hope we can get some analog meters back on our houses. I know you guys don't want to do that, but we deserve them. And, you know, it was a project that took our money that we struggled to pay these bills with and gave us something that we basically did not want and was forced upon us. Threats of being cut off, threats of incredible prices to have to have the electricity turned back on again. A lot of us called it coercion. A lot of us called it other names, which I'm not going to say right now, because that mean guy in the corner might throw me out. You know, I don't, you know, I don't think you're mean. Anyway, thank you very much. That's, that's what I've got to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia, excuse me, Patricia Heine.
Evening Commissioners. My name is Patricia Heine. I am the co-president of Three Fifty Eugene, a climate justice organization in town. Been working for over a dozen years on climate policy at the city and state levels and also energy policy and with the utilities. And I'm here to deliver some things to you. There's a letter for each of your Commissioners that's from the Three Fifty Eugene folks with some concerns and interests and hope that you will pay attention to in your hiring of the new general manager. We thank Mr. Lawson for his outstanding work. He met with us as soon as we came to town and was very forthcoming. And we're big fans of Kelly Hale here and, and you all as well. So the letters are here and I'll deliver them as I'm able. I also got together with a bunch of community members last evening over at Claim Fifty-Two, who also are really, you know, interested in making sure our energy policy is up to date with all the latest of electrification, geothermal and all the other things that we can consider now that are, that are the latest and greatest. And we know that you have the smartest people in town at your organization and we really, really know it's going to be hard to replace Mr. Lawson. But we want someone who is going to really tie in with the things that are happening now that will bring us into a clean energy future. It's never been more important. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last one I had. Is there anybody else in the audience that didn't sign up that would like to speak at this point? Okay, with that, I will close the public comment section and ask Commissioners or staff if there's any comment that they would like to make. Mindy?
Yeah. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's nice to be thanked. So thank you, Chris, for coming. And it's great that that was resolved. And I also want to say, in response to Patty, that we've also received some other emails to us, just mentioning different priorities of what people want to see in the general manager. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I always appreciate comments coming out and lovely to hear all the thanks to Tana too. I love hearing about what the, you know, the, we get to do as a public utility to help support education in our community to further the interest in climate change work and nature policy. So thank you all for coming out. Appreciate the comments.
Yeah, I'll just echo my sentiment too. And I am appreciative of, of the kind words and Tana, good to see you again. And it was great to see you at the event. And just thank you for all the work that many of our community members are putting in. I think it's very clear here from public comments, just the, the support and the partnership between EWEB and our community and how, how well we work together. So thank you.
Commissioner Brown, any comments?
John, good. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to the public hearing for for the upcoming two thousand twenty-six proposed budget and price in person or by telephone. And we have one person signed up. Eric? You're the only one. Help me with your last name. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Eric, you, you have the floor.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, General Managers. A pleasure to be with you again. Just some comments about the budget, just the budget overall. Too many good things in there to, to, to talk about. Very much appreciated all the work that went into it, all the documentation. Made it easier, easier to figure out what was going on, where. And of course, I've been coming to meetings, so I have a very good idea of, of what, what's, what's happening. Also appreciate the, the web version there that's posted. That's last year's budget. But I'm, I'm assuming, of course, that once this budget is passed, it will be a similar document, lots of graphs and things like that, which make it easier, I think, for people to read and so forth. So I appreciate that too. I appreciate the attention to rates and affordability. And there was some, some talk about that here tonight. I appreciate the fact that, that you, you're continuing the, the, the funding of, of programs that help out people that have difficulty paying for their bills and so forth. I never doubted that that would happen, but I do appreciate that that's, that's part, that's part of that. That word affordability is becoming more and more prevalent in our discourse lately. I mean, it's always been there, especially when you talk about housing and rentals and things like that in Eugene, but it seems to have taken on a new life. It's also become a bit more political. I don't know where, where that's going. But the fact that, that EWEB is paying attention to those rates is, 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 is a good thing. Saw a, an article that talked about some notable increases in, in electrical power rates this year by state. And so they, they basically broke it down by state. Fortunately, Washington, the state of Oregon, the state of Washington, I think one other state up here too. But I can't remember which one. It wasn't California, but we're on the lower end of all that. So that's good news. I think part of that is probably because we get so much power from BPA, but be that as it may, it, that's a little bit of good news. And I think the whole idea of affordability is, is you're going to hear more about that. Very pleased to see the work that was done trying to match costs to rates that are charged to ratepayers. I don't understand the philosophy of that. It's really complicated. I enjoyed the presentation I saw about it. But I understand why you're doing it. And I, I think that's, I think that's a good thing to do. And the London, the last thing I'll mention is, is I don't know how you do it. It's kind of magic to me, but I think it's good magic and how you managed to, to balance the rate increases that you're planning, along with the taking on the capital projects that you're doing. So the, the Willamette Second Source and the work you're doing, upgrading electrical equipment, all those things that, that have been accomplished and are, are coming, are, are upcoming and so forth. The fact that you're able to do that and also sort of, and also keep the rates affordable and keep the increases that we know are coming anyway and, you know, spread them out and so forth. And so accomplish the work, I think, is a very good thing too. So thank you very much. I'm certainly in, in favor of this budget for what it's worth.
Thank you very much. Any other? Okay, we have no other comments, so I will close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony. We will take that into consideration when we get on to item number twelve. So moving on, we are now on item number six, which is approval of Consent Calendar A. Ooh, okay. Moved by Mindy, seconded by Sonia. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. John, raise your hand. There we go. Okay. Next, we have approval of Consent Calendar B.
Move to Bruce.
Moved by Sonia, seconded by Mindy. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye. Unanimous. Okay. We did not remove any items from the consent calendar, which was item number eight. We will be moving on to item number nine. The Mackenzie Valley Territory Realignment. Granting authority to the general manager to negotiate and execute a transfer within the guidelines. I will turn this over to General Manager Lawson.
President Borowski, thank you. Commissioners, good evening once again. This is a resolution. And go ahead with the next slide. I'm just going to sit here just to avoid the transition time upfront. This is a resolution granting authority to the general manager to negotiate and execute. But will end up being likely several contracts that would be involved in any transfer of a service territory. Particularly in this case, in the Mackenzie Valley to Lane Electric, along with any other regulatory filings that we would have to make to the Oregon PUC, for example, or to others as part of the process. Just to be clear, there have been multiple memos on this that have been part of board correspondence and, and discussions over the last several months. And so a lot of those details are provided in those background materials. Just to be clear, we are talking about distribution assets in the Mackenzie Valley, which does not include transmission. It does not include generation facilities or substations or any particular recreational facilities or parklands that, that we may own. It's, it's simply distribution assets along with the rights to serve approximately a little over 3,000 customers. This through the years has been of interest to those customers through a number of different feedback mechanisms. Part of that because while E-Web does provide a significant amount of communications with them and has, we do have a at-large board commissioner. This is something where they could have direct voting authority as part of the governance structure of, of Lane Electric, for example. It also includes the federal out, the, the portion of federal allocation that would be attributed to that, that load. And just a number of other terms and conditions that are, that are part of the agreements and have, which been provided to this board under certain confidentiality permissions granted by the, by the state of Oregon under ORS laws. So with that, the motion is up there. I'd be happy to entertain any comments or questions. But the, the motion is granting authority to take particular actions that are consistent with the guidance that you have provided.
Okay, discussion, Mindy.
I, I just want to say that I highly support this for several reasons. One, because E-Web is largely a, an urban utility. And the Mackenzie Valley Territory is rural and Lane Electric is rural. I think that by splitting this, it allows us to do what we do best for our customers and allows Lane Electric to serve upriver folks in a way that better matches their needs. And secondly, as the at-large commissioner, I've interacted with a variety of upriver customers. And I know we talk about them as a unit, but they're actually a very diverse group. Residents, businesses, a lot of people have different, different concerns or different interests. But the one thing that there is in common with, I hear from people is their lack of representation. And I think that one of the things that makes E-Web so great as a publicly owned utility is that we do have public representation. And so by allowing this transfer to happen, the upriver customers in our territory will be able to have that same type of representation that the rest of our customers have. So I'm highly in support of this.
Thank you. John, anything?
I'm good. Thank you. I, I we went through this 10 years ago and I'm glad we finally found a way to, to achieve it. I think it's a win-win for everybody. I'm fully in support of it.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I'll just echo my support of this and I just want to highlight my, my concerns have been answered at previous meetings, but I've been concerned about if E-Web would face any job loss or if our staff would, which is, sounds like there's not. That if the customers themselves over in the Upper River would be concerned about this, which it sounds like they're not. It seems like this is supported by everyone and a, just a good move for us to, to make. So I I, I think just echoing what Commissioner Schlossberg has said of, it gives us the ability to refocus our energy towards Eugene Metro and in a way that is, is supported by all, that every, every step seems to be in a very positive direction. So I'll be voting in support of this.
Uh, highly supportive for all the reasons mentioned and plus you mind, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, then I'll, I'll move to approve the motion, resolution number 2524. Don't think I have to read the rest of that, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so discussion on the motion. I just have a couple of questions. It's authorizing the general manager to go to negotiate and execute. So that means that this won't come back before the board. You will execute it. This is giving you the full authority to negotiate and execute without coming back to the board.
That's correct, President Borowski. The, the condition of that is that I have been provided guidance from this board and if should, should anything go outside of that guidance, I would be obligated to return to the board.
And then my second question then would be in, if for some reason the transition of the, your position to a new general manager. Just, I, I'm not sure that that, you know, how that plays into negotiations and maybe there might at least be a check-in with the, the board before, before it's executed, just to make sure. I, I'm not sure if that would be appropriate or not, but it's coming across some different timelines.
There's, there's two pieces of context to that. First of all, all chaos would break loose everywhere. No, I'm, I'm just kidding. The general manager is granted this authority by title. First of all, it's not Frank Lawson being granted authority. The other thing is the designee clause is also in there. And then probably the most important aspect is this has been a team effort by staff. So the steering committee, including finance manager, operations, executive, chief financial officer, key people in our risk management group have all been participating in the process. And I would expect that to, to continue. I think it's not just the general managers of Lane Electric and E-Web that are doing this. I think our organizations are collaborative. I think we all see the right purposes of this. But we all understand there's a lot of details and we want to make sure those details are executed well and meet the objectives of this board and the, and the directors of Lane Electric. Thus we have conditions on, on continuing. And so I think those, those are details that we would want to work out. We do recognize that while May 1st is a target date, that it would likely either be in the spring or in the fall because of staff and resource considerations. And so if some of the filings take longer than May, then the, the timeframe could push past when I would still be at, at E-Web. I don't know if I answered your question and, and I, I, I do think that, that staff and I, I can commit on behalf of, of Deborah and other staff, that we will keep the board informed as we go through this process as appropriate. It could be monthly, it could, could be quarterly, depending on how much activity is taking place. And we'll just make that commitment.
Yeah. And again, and I'm just, you know, since it does say the general manager, I'm just throwing out there, we get a new general manager in here and he says, I don't want to do this. We've given him authority to go negotiate it. So I just want that direct, him or her, or they. Excuse me. I just want to make sure that everything keeps going in the direction that we had hoped for. And then the other thing that I just want to mention is that the Mackenzie Valley has been a legacy part of our organization for over a hundred years. We got started by building a dam up there and bringing power to this, to the city of Eugene. So as, as times change, things change, but just know that, that the Upper Mackenzie Valley and the Mackenzie watershed will always be a part of our heritage and our, our concerns going forward. We are, we still have that as our number one source of drinking water. So we are very committed to the Mackenzie Valley, just because we're transferring some of our assets to another very fine organization, doesn't mean that we're turning our backs on the, on those people. So I am also in favor of moving forward with this.
President Borowski, I would, I would, on, on behalf of management, echo that our presence in the Mackenzie Valley, our investments in the Mackenzie Valley will continue. We have generation assets as well as a prime drinking water source. And so that we would expect to continue.
Great. Okay. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Okay, all in favor of resolution number 2524, authorizing the general manager to negotiate and execute an agreement. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you for that. John, he raised his hand.
Yeah, okay. Just, just for the record, it was five to zero.
Yes.
Big John over my shoulder.
I saw him raise his hand. All right, okay. Aye, there he goes. Yes. And we, we can hear the waves every time you talk, so. All right, next item, item is, item number 10, limited income program assistance.
President Borowski, commissioners, I'm, I'm going to sit here as I think the, the front row may get a little bit crowded and most of the time they don't want to sit next to me anyway. So I'll stay over here.
This is my assigned seat.
Holly, can you advance the slide? So commissioners, really appreciate the, the flexibility on this particular, particular subject matter. We are deviating a little bit from history where we simply presented a budget and then called for approval of, of the rates associated with that budget. Part of the reason that we're doing it a little bit differently this year is the commissioners have expressed interest in a couple of related things. And when you talk about rates without the context of some of the other financial tools we have, such as fees and customer programs, you're really not getting the entire picture. And so our intent this evening is to give you a little bit of a, of a broader context to how those all relate to each other. And so we appreciate the fact that you're going to let us walk through this and these different program elements in particular, before we get into the rates themselves. And so programs really have specific outcomes in mind. Rates gen, generally tend to be our cost recovery mechanism and things that we look to do as far as, as driving consumption behavior. And then fees really are a result of very specific cost recovery for different types of activities that, that directly relate to those costs. So just quick reminder on how rate setting works. This will relate to the, the budgetary portion of this. We really look at the revenue requirement for the organization. This is sort of the balancing of the budget. And typically, like this year, it's approaching about almost half a billion dollars, just a little under half a billion dollars for both water and electric and shared services. We allocate that to various customer classes. It's driven by what kinds of costs those are. And then those are used to establish the fair and equitable rates that we look to, to develop from that revenue requirement. The, we do have certain principles that, that drive those rates. Again, these have, have been a part of discussions for a number of years and we do want to continue to abide by the principles of rate design. Some of those have to do with financial security and, and sufficiency. And also transparency as to where those costs come from. Some of those calculations do get a little bit tricky. That's why we have Adam sitting there to make sure that the allocation of certain costs go into certain buckets that then can be recovered in the appropriate manner. But we really do appreciate the fact that at least this evening, we're going to talk about programs, in particular our limited income programs and improvements that we're planning to make there. We're going to talk about energy efficiency and how that relates specifically to the rental stock in the community. And then we're going to tie it together when we talk about budgets and then the impacts on rates. And so you can see, we'll, we'll see how our present programs can affect the rates paid by a limited income customer, for example. So we're going to tile that together a little bit different way this, this time. And so with that, we're going to tag team a little bit. We're going to jump to limited income. Then we'll go to energy efficiency and then budgets and rates. And then we'll give you a little bit of a breather. And then you will, we'll come back and you can grill the team here with all kinds of, of questions. But with that, I'll pass it off to Anna Wade, who is our customer solutions manager, who'll talk a little bit more detail about what we're going to do going forward with limited income.
Thank you, Frank. For the record, I'm Anna Wade, the Customer Solutions Manager, AIC. We are eager to be here tonight. We know that this is a really, these are really important topics to the board. So we're eager to share our findings and also for the discussion that will follow. With that, I'm going to start with a little table setting. Go ahead. So the board is familiar with our five-year themes as well as our annual goals as they relate to limited income. I've also included the specific deliverable that was assigned to me for your reference on the slide. Next slide, please. So if you boil all that down, this is my mission statement. Based on customer feedback, identify options to enhance impact and drive participation in limited income products and programs while managing budget and rates. So fair enough. This is our agenda. This, I'm going to cover this section in, I'm going to cover this topic in three sections. We'll start with some customer data. Followed by a little higher level overview of spectrum of need and then we'll end up with some strategies or programs going forward. Next slide. Okay. So within your board packet, you saw a more comprehensive overview of customer data and experience. We're going to just touch on a few of those, but some of my takeaways through this exercise. Even with bill assistance, some of our customers still struggle. Also, there are community members who need help and they're not receiving it. We know that based on census data, et cetera, but we're going to get into that a little bit more. And then also scheduling and documentation are challenges for our customers going through the bill assistance process. Next slide. Unsurprisingly, customer, our, our limited income customers, even though they do receive assistance, still face challenges. Bill assistance customers are twice as likely to receive late fees and four times as likely to be disconnected. These account actions take a financial toll in both added expense as well as deposit requirements that often follow. Next slide, please. Accessibility really needs to be a primary focus of our programs and, and our program management. For example, 500 customers apply for ECC every year on average, but do not ultimately receive assistance. These aren't customers who are determined to be ineligible. These are customers that sort of fall out of the process. So there's churn. And we need to identify points of friction. Also, 43% of applicants are not registered on E-Web's portal. That is really important because that is the most efficient way for our customers to participate really with any of our programs. So we need to get customers onboarded. And then also on awareness, two thirds of disconnected customers are not receiving assistance. That means when we look at customers that are, that are disconnected each year, we don't see evidence of bill assistance on their, on their, on their customer account. So we need to look at some direct engagement strategies. We know from our 2024 customer survey that approximately 70% of respondents are aware of ECC. So we're thinking more in terms of are they, were So we're thinking more in terms of are they were in the moment when they needed the most? Next slide, please. So this is data that was shared in your packet, but in thinking about those 500 customers that apply each year and don't make it through the process, I wanted to hear from them. I wanted to, you know, kind of validate what we, what we think might be the cause. As you can see, the two most challenging items that our customers responded to were scheduling and attending the intake appointment as well as getting that documentation together. So it's something that we had suspected, our customers validated for us. Income verification is a challenge. We also know that it does create delays in receiving assistance. So customers that can be approved through categorical eligibility, for example, we can apply assistance in as little as two business days. That can be up to a month on average if we have to refer them. So it makes a big difference. Next slide, please. All right, so this section, we're going to talk a little bit more high level. While our customers are unique, there are some common themes that we see. Some key takeaways for me in this section, one size does not fit all. Our customers are different and we, different needs require different tools. Next slide, please. So some customers face chronic financial burden. These are our lowest income customers. They tend to have lower economic mobility. So we know that even with assistance, you know, they're going to face challenges on their account. Their, their financial pressures are persistent and they are looking for support on a regular basis. Next are our customers that are a little bit more intermittent in their need and their outreach to E-Web. These can be customers from our lowest income to moderate income. Also Alice customers, asset limited income constrained but employed. So these are customers that tend, they're able to cover their bills for the most part. Sometimes they have late fees, things like that, but they are, say, a trip to urgent care away or perhaps an unexpected week out of work and they're in trouble. And when they encounter these situations, the need, the, the need is urgent. They may not be eligible for all social safety nets because there are income requirements as, as we have here at E-Web. And then lastly, our customers face life events. These can put anybody into immediate crisis. So these aren't just the kinds of events that have a financial toll, but also a psychological one. They can affect people's ability to pay just in terms of accessibility or, you know, account access. Examples include, you know, critical illness, job loss, something that just takes an immediate impactful financial toll. Next slide, please. All right, real quickly, before I get into the data here, I just want to comment. I am very proud of the continuous improvement work that we've done over the years with our bill assistance programs. You know, categorical eligibility, like our, our time to payment, we've, we've done some really good work. That being said, $280 one time a year is still a very blunt instrument, given the variety of factors that, that affect our customers' ability to pay. One of those factors being, well, how many services do they have on their E-Web bill? 52% of our bill assistance customers are electric service only, compared with 39% that receive all four services. That makes a big difference. So if you consider two low-usage electric customers, say they consume 580 kilowatt hours a month, right? That $280 is going to cover about 25% if you're electric, electric only for the year. If you're paying for all four services, that drops it down to 14%. So what makes the difference? How many services that, that customers are receiving, how big an impact we're having with that 280? But I think it's really important, let's not forget, that many of our customers obviously face a much higher burden with utility costs. Slide please. This is a concept that the board is very familiar with. Limited income does, does not mean low usage. In fact, our limited, our bill assistance customers mirror our general public in terms of their consumption patterns. And that is, you know, part of when we're talking about like fixed charges versus variable charges. We know that the impact to those customers, no matter, no matter how you balance those, there's going to be an impact whether they're high consumers or low consumers. High-usage, limited-income customers cover an outside share of E-Web's fixed costs through their usage charges. So in short, this is why we are pursuing cost-based rates coupled with a programmatic approach to bill assistance programs. Essentially, a thumb on the scale of rate design creates winners and losers based on consumption rather than aligning to a true cost of service. And that is why we're pursuing a programmatic approach, as I said, to bill assistance. Next slide, please. All right, with so many different factors affecting our customers' ability to pay, it stands to reason that there really, there isn't a silver bullet. There isn't this unicorn perfect program out, out there that is going to attend to all of the different needs or address all the factors that are, are affecting our customers. We need tailored tools to support our bill assistance customers and we need to acknowledge individual needs in a way that is both sustainable and conscientious of ratepayer dollars. Next slide, please. All right, this last, last section, we're on to program strategy. So I'm going to cover this in, in three categories. First is bill assistance. And then I'm going to talk about a couple of complementary programs and then we'll talk about some customer engagement. Next slide. All right, so the first of three bill assistance programs that we will be offering in the future is, is new. It's an affordability program. So this will take the form of monthly billing credits that are tiered such that the lower the income, the greater the support provided. This particular program would be, would have the lowest eligibility criteria for income. And we would look to increase the renewal cycle of this program. You know, speaking to kind of that sort of like chronic, chronic need that we touched on in the beginning. The point here is that persistent need needs consistent and predictable support. And so that's why this sort of like shape and structure of this will be most helpful to our lowest income customers. The second one is an enhancement of our, our existing ECC program. So this is really targeted at those customers who need intermittent support, that need urgent support. So it'll remain a one-time bill credit, but we'll be targeting our final notice customers, doing direct outreach to those who are at imminent risk of disconnect. So we can apply that assistance where it is most urgently needed. We will look to expand income criteria for this particular program to go beyond our lowest income customers to moderate income as well. And in order to meet the urgency with which these customers are, are in need of assistance, we will pursue a self-attestation program coupled with an audit to ensure ongoing program integrity. And of course, these first two, we will have budget caps that will keep us straight with board-approved budgets over time. And then the last one is energy share, which this is a program that works today. It provides same-day first-call resolution. It's a tool that our CSAs rely on to provide immediate and compassionate support to our customers that are experiencing crisis events. It's a, it's a program that's working. An area that we could improve and that was noted by our, our Goodworks consultants is that making sure that we have appropriate guidelines and training for staff such that we're extending an equity-focused allocation of those resources. And again, energy share is funded exclusively through customer donations. Next slide, please. All right, complimentary programs. So in addition to money on bills and providing financial assistance, there are some rate-neutral programs that can be really, really helpful to customers in addition to that. Prepay is a great example. So we talked a little bit earlier about the, the sort of like financial impact of fees and deposits on customers. Prepay programs can eliminate that without shifting costs on other customers. So that's, that's a great option there. Average monthly billing, this is like budget billing, only better. Well, at least in, in my mind. So average monthly billing provides that same sort of seasonal, seasonal smoothing. So our, it helps our customers avoid those winter peaks, alleviating a source of financial hardship. But you don't, it doesn't carry the risk of a large balance accrual. So that can be really challenging, particularly for customers with, with limited and moderate income. But that also represents a liability to the utility when those balances get really large. So average monthly billing is kind of a win for customers, but it also allows us to reduce eligibility criteria, which is really helpful to customers as well. And the last one that we touched on quite a bit is categorical eligibility. This has been hugely successful for our program. I, you know, shared some of those stats with you before, but we need to continue to look to expand on those options because of the precariousness of just relying primarily on light heat. But also, you know, we can look at potentially legislative solutions or community partnerships. The more we can reduce referrals, the better our customer experience, the less the overhead, overhead. So that's always a winner. And then next slide, please. Last section is on customer engagement. So following the success of the community table last year, Jen and I would like to leverage that in order to convene with our community partners in 2026 that serve limited income households. We want to strengthen coordination and collaboration there. These are existing communities with trusting constituents. And so tapping into those can really help us in a couple of ways. One, reducing access, reducing or increasing awareness, but also making sure that we are doing outreach to underrepresented groups. Excuse me. Next one is direct customer engagement. So the, the, the survey that we just recently completed, that's really helpful in terms of kind of sussing out some things that we'd had some, some concerns on. Well, we really do need to keep that going. Continuous improvement relies on an ongoing feedback loop. So we need to make sure that our customers have direct channels to be able to provide that feedback and that we're able to make use of it through continuous improvement efforts. And the last one is a portal enrollment drive. So I mentioned that, you know, we would really like to make sure that customers are in our portal so they have the best access to customer programs. Again, it's not, it's not unique to E-Web that these customers have lower enrollment, but we are not ready to throw in the towel. So I could also say about this, this isn't necessarily like a marketing campaign, but we want to look to ways like how can we really partner knowledgeable staff with customers so that they can be supported with things like low digital literacy or, you know, limited internet access? So those are some things that we're going to be looking to push out in 2026 and beyond. That concludes my prepared comments. So I'm going to pass it down to Greg and he's going to talk about tenant-focused energy efficiency.
Just a comment, do, does the person one, the board want to ask questions in each segment? Or how, how do you guys feel about this?
Management, I think it would be better for them to do their presentation and then we ask questions.
Okay, just wanted to check in. It's a, it's a long, there's a lot of information, so, okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Good evening, I'm Greg Kellher, customer solutions manager, and I'm here to talk about efficiency and conservation programs. Specifically, we're going to look at energy efficiency for tenants, how rental status, dwelling type, and income enter relate with consumption as well, and what this means for programs. This supports several strategic goals and themes, primarily enhancing program impact, but also the ERP, strategic use of data and affordability. We're going to walk through these topics. Define the customer segment of interest. Address common assumptions regarding energy usage. Compare these with what the data shows about housing usage and need. And then we'll share our insights and how this information applies to programs. The group where these three circles intersect faces unique challenges with high bills, limited control over their housing, and financial constraints. Couple of definitions here. In the context of our data, income constrained means having received ECC, energy share, or light heat bill assistance at that premise within the last 10 years. And high consumption is the 75th percentile and above of all annual usage in residential premises. Let's compare some common assumptions with what we see in the data. This is based on a one-year sample of E-Web residential premises, excluding those with PV generation, multiple meters, or less than 12 months of data. Number one, low, limited income equals low consumption. I know you've heard this before 10 minutes ago. Data shows that limited income usage patterns mirror other customers and they use a bit more energy on average by dwelling type, generally in the 5 to 10% range. This is also true by dwelling type when considering owners and tenants separately. Number two, tenants use more energy than homeowners. Data shows that tenants use a bit less energy on average by dwelling type than owner-occupied homes. This also holds true by dwelling type when considering limited income and non-limited income separately. Number three, rentals are underserved by E-Web programs. Tenants, as we said, don't use more energy and detached rentals have comparable, if not higher, energy efficiency participation rates. Detached, I want to make sure you see that word. Number four, energy efficiency upgrades always reduce bills significantly. No, savings depend on several factors, including occupant behavior. For example, a ductless heat pump might be used more and increase comfort and add cooling for someone without really saving much energy. Number five, energy efficiency is the best or only way to help. Sometimes other tools such as bill assistance or education to change habits can have a greater dollar-for-dollar impact. Consider a ductless heat pump paying $6,000 to save $50 a month might make sense. But if you're only going to save $10 a month, bill assistance might be a better option. Here are four real E-Web customers' graphs from their November 2025 bills. A is an apartment with air conditioning. B is a rental manufactured home with air conditioning. C is a single-family home, owner occupied. And D is a tenant in a duplex. Guess which of these bills is limited income? All of these bills are limited income. Once again, limited income does not equal low usage. Usage patterns of limited income customers mirror those of all customers. We are going to summarize what the data reveals in each of these categories. Give you a chance to take a look at those categories. We're going to go through them one by one. Did we lose something?
It's decoded.
We're just going to have a short pause for some technical difficulties. Please hang on. We're just going to have a short pause for some technical difficulties. Please hang on.
Good luck, John Brown. Well.
I've got it right here. So, see it?
We like lying in this.
Sure. You can continue on. We've all got it on our. Yeah, so we're on tenants, what this, the data reveals. Oh, do you not have?
Oh, do you want to look at mine? I can share with John.
I got you.
No, I don't need that.
Okay, did y'all get a chance to see those?
Yeah.
Six boxes. Perfect. Housing context. First, most tenants live in apartments and plexes. They comprise 78% of Eugene rentals. Now here a plex is defined as two, three or four dwelling units within one bill. Nearly all apartments and over three quarters of plexes are rentals, but only about 15% of houses are rentals. Uh, usage context. Apartments use less energy than other homes. It is also true that tenants use less energy on average by dwelling type than owner occupants. So less usage due to dwelling type and less usage within each dwelling type. The graph on the right shows that there is less usage variation between apartments than there is between houses. And of course, that increased variation in houses is on the high side. Need context. Assistance levels vary by dwelling type. Customers in apartments, plexes and manufactured homes access assistance at two to three times the rate of occupants in single family homes. 14% of customers in houses versus 28%. Top is houses, by the way, 14% in houses versus 28, 33 and 36% respectively for apartments, plexes and manufactured homes. This translates to dollars. Customers in houses have received 31% of ECC dollars over the last 10 years. ECC, um, cus- eWeb customer care. But they do comprise 55% of dwellings in Eugene. Customers in the other 45% of dwellings, the bottom three bars on the graph, have received 69% of ECC dollars over that same period. So what does the data tell us? Apartment occupants have lower and more consistent bills than those in single family homes. Hardship doesn't necessarily coincide with high usage. Energy usage is one of, uh, but one of many factors that contribute to hardship. But we need to recognize that it isn't the primary driver. Circling back to the and robust programs already exist. Plexes, they're another 10% of dwellings and are eligible for most of the same programs. But unlike houses and manufactured homes, most of these are rentals. Energy efficiency has limited savings per dollar in apartments. However, they comprise only 28% of dwellings and bills are lower and more consistent. Here's what we're doing now today. Um, I'm going to go through these, these, um, existing programs. We have higher energy efficiency incentives for dwellings that are occupied by limited income customers, regardless of who owns the property. That's heating and cooling measures, water heating, windows, and we typically pay 100% of the cost of insulation for a limited income occupied home. We offer free home energy scores for anyone living in a rental. And something new, we're going to create a new level of energy efficiency incentives for low, middle income. Those are Alice customers, asset limited income constrained yet employed. These are customers who don't qualify for standard limited income incentives, but are still struggling. So one more tier of incentives, which is going to be higher than normal. Uh, for that, the tier of customers who don't qualify now. And targeted outreach and incentives for bulk retrofits in existing multifamily dwellings. Bulk retrofits may include LED lighting fixtures, heat pump water heaters, and envelope measures where applicable. Envelope meaning doors, uh, windows and insulation. And duckless heating and cooling or smart thermostats where these make sense. So sometimes duckless heating system doesn't make sense, but a smart thermostat will save energy as well and much more economically. And for these, this targeted outreach, we will work with the City of Eugene and others to help identify these parties for outreach. This is where we want to catch these multifamily dwellings at the right time or it makes sense. They don't have to close their doors and lose rent. Um, they can do it while they're doing other things. So we can get other measures installed that will save energy in multifamily buildings. And now we're going to move on to budget.
Now that we've reviewed the existing and planned programs that support limited income customers, we'd like to connect this work to the broader theme of this evening's presentation. Providing reliable and responsible service through fair, transparent and community focused rates as we transition into the 2026 budget, revenue requirement and customer rates. This evening marks the culmination of a six-month process that began in June when the board first outlined its investment priorities, followed by the introduction of the draft long-term financial plans and capital investments in July. Since then, the financial planning and analysis team has worked closely with utility leadership to refine detailed draft budgets and update the long-term financial plans, bringing us to this moment tonight. We are now at the final stage of the annual financial planning process and are requesting board action on the 26, 2026 budgets and price proposals. The proposed 2026 budget totals 487.3 million for the electric and water utilities combined, which is 2.3 million less than the approved 2025 budget. Due to accelerated capital project spending, a 2025 capital budget amendment was included earlier in this evening's consent calendar. Accordingly, the 2026 budget figure has been reduced from what was presented last month. The figures presented here align with the line item totals in attachment one of the proposed 2026 budget document included in this evening's board packet. And now Adam will provide a final update on the proposed electric and water prices.
Thanks, Tim. Um, with the budget, with the, with the budget and financial needs now established, we'll turn to the rate proposal. But please, so earlier Frank reviewed the three steps to the rate making process, the first one being establishing the revenue requirement. Uh, based on the proposed 2026 budgets, the electric utility will require a 3.9% rate adjustment, um, in addition to the bond bill pass through and the water utility will require a 6% rate adjustment. Slide please. The second step to the rate making process is, um, making sure that each customer class pays their share of the customer costs or of the, of the different costs. And for the water utility, our cost of service analysis indicates a 5.1% um, adjustment for the residential customer class and a 6.7% for the commercial general service customer class. The electric utility, um, residential customers would see a 4.4% increase and the three uh, general service classes has shown. The cost of service analysis also indicated, uh, providing electric service to the Mackenzie Valley costs about 21% more than the in-town service territory as that cost differential would support a customer class uh, for that service area. If the transfer does not move forward, staff recommends the establishment of that customer class as reflected in, uh, resolution number 2525. Next slide. A key element of the third step in the rate making process is ensuring the costs are allocated between fixed and variable charges. Uh, last month, we heard the board express concerns about the proposed increase of basic charge for the electric utility from $30 to $38.50. So this slide demonstrates our longstanding goal of aligning the fixed and variable cost to recover them. The base, uh, a basic charge that's below cost would result in low income or low usage customers underpaying shifting cost to other customer class as other customers within the class, high usage customer, customers, including the, um, limited income customers in that high usage uh, segment would end up overpaying. Electrification can also be discouraged if, um, the basic charge is below cost. Uh, revenues can become less stable for the utility and, um, it can present challenges for rate design options in the future. The proposed, uh, $38.50 accurately reflects the fixed costs for the electric utility. Slide. This slide shows the proposed, uh, changes for the residential water customers. And you'll see on the top, um, table, the basic charge would increase by $1 per month and the cost of 1,000 gallons of water uh, would rise by 17 cents. The bottom slide, we provided examples of typical households. A low usage household, um, is reflected with a 3,000 gallons per month and that would be a uh, small house with indoor irrigation only or an apartment. The current bill under that segment would be $33 per month. Under the proposed 2026 rates, that would rise to $35 per month until, um, the middle of the year when the watershed recovery fee expires and it would fall back down to $32 per month. We've also included examples for moderate usage households, uh, roughly 9,000 gallons per month and high usage at 13,000 gallons per month. Uh, which would represent significant outdoor irrigation. Next slide. This slide shows the bill impact for residential electric customers. As you can see, the basic charge increases $8.50 per month while the usage charge decreases. The shift represents a more accurate, um, distribution of fixed and variable costs. At the bottom of the slide, we'll, we're once again showing, um, low, moderate and high usage households. So you can see the impacts of these changes at different consumption levels. At the low end, a small, single-family house using gas heating or an apartment would use around 580 kilowatt hours per month. This bill would increase by $7 per month on average. Um, a small, single-family household represented, um, using electric heat would use, uh, $1,600, 1,600 kilowatt hours would see a $3 per month increase. High-usage household would see about a $2 increase. Examples of these high-usage households are, um, a large, single-family home or home or an electric vehicle um, present in the household, dwelling with multiple, um, occupants, such as a large family or several. Or a very inefficient, um, house potentially. Um, we understand the commission, commissioners expressed interest in how the bill, uh, changes would impact limited income customers. As noted, the limited income consumption mirrors the overall customer, residential customer class. The green line at the bottom shows how the existing $280 ECC bill credit, if applied equally over 12 months, would impact the limited income customers. That does not account for light heat or other assistance options. And next slide. This, uh, slide was shown, uh, in an earlier presentation, a similar slide that shows residential impacted different usage ranges. On the left side, you'll see the lowest usage households, those using up to 400 kilowatt hours. And on the right, the highest usage households at 1,800 kilowatt hours. The copper color bars represent residential customers overall and the blue bars representing the limited income customers who receive bill assistance. As we've discussed, the usage patterns for limited income customers closely here in the overall customer base. As you can see, the more electricity a household uses, the higher the bills. Um, the average monthly bill impacts $8 or zero to $8 depending on. Uh, next slide. This slide compares eWeb bills, um, for the moderate usage households to several local and regional utilities. For the electric service that changed from $209 to $212 would keep eWeb roughly in the same position on the chart. Of course, we don't know how the comparators might adjust their rates in 2026, yes. Which could shift our overall comparison. Uh, for the water utility, the bill would increase by $2 from $46 to $48, um, which would move our position slightly. Uh, however, when the watershed recovery fee sunsets in July, um, our competitive position would improve. Uh, we've included a comparison also for state national utilities, eWeb's electric prices remain below the Washington, Oregon, California and US overall average based on US Energy Administration data. The slide shows how customer care bill assistance funding has changed over time. We recognize that board's strong focus on affordability, particularly for limited income customers. As we've discussed, our rates remain cost-based to ensure fairness and transparency, while affordability is addressed through customer programs such as bill assistance. Uh, earlier this evening, Anna outlined how we're refining those programs to better meet customer needs. Reflecting that priority, the proposed 2026 budget includes an additional $500,000 ECC fund.
Okay. So it says break, but I think it's question time or not? I, I know I have questions. I don't know if other board members have questions as well while we've got. Yeah. Unless you want to do a break and come back and. Okay. All right. We'll take a break for 10 minutes. And then we'll come back with questions. Seven. 24. Buddy. We have increased our panel upfront so that they're all ready to answer our questions and comments. Again, thank you for the presentations. This was really, I was just talking to Sonya about it. This was really informative and a really good way to dig into certain parts of our budget. I hope this is something that we have going forward that we can use as a template going forward on other parts of the budget as well. Things that may jump up as as interest to the board or just to help us learn more about how you guys come up with these budgets and and do it. So with that, we will start off with questions or comments. We'll start with Sonya.
I just have to say I'm so excited about this presentation. All the work that you put into it. I just really feel like years of of kind of toiling with what this looks like. You all nailed it. This is amazing. So thank you for that. You know, the the outcomes and some of the pieces that came from it were surprising, which is great. I think you did the work to get the data to actually explain what is going on to see what. You know, we had thoughts and expectations of what it might look like and it was different and that's okay. What I'm really thrilled about is that you took it the step further and said, look at our customer needs and where they're at and need them. Especially the lowest income people that are constantly challenged. This hits it in a way that we have not done before. And so I am so excited. I know we had a a big overhaul in the EEC program when I first joined the board where we had a lot of overhead and burden to get people qualified. And there was this major overhaul that I think some of you were a part of at that point to really get more dollars to the the people. And I think this is the next level of that work. And I just commend you so much for taking this on. I'm very supportive. I have other minor questions about how some of it functions, but I will let others give their commentary before I dig into questions. I just thank you so much.
Okay, Mindy.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Just echoing what Sonya said, it was super informative and I feel like for many years, the board has been asking questions specifically around low income programs and you've answered our question, but we kind of haven't been talking on the same level. We've been talking like on different planes. And I feel like this, you you've definitely addressed the things that we've had questions about and clarified some of our assumptions. So thank you for that. I have some like just kind of nip, not nitpicky, but just specific questions about some of the things that you presented. Not that I'm challenging anything, but I just some clarifications. So starting with the low income things. The portal registration, I just have a comment on that. My dad is not low income, but he's elderly and I imagine that many a significant amount of our low income customers are elderly. And I can say that that portal registration is a pain. There's so many portals that we're required to sign up for and somebody who is computer savvy can maybe figure it out, have a password saving thing on their computer, but I appreciate your commitment to making that portal registration easier for people who are not computer literate or who have don't have great access to the internet because it is just in general a real challenge. And I have a question about our customers whose maybe immigration status is not certain. Especially now, are we expecting that some people will be more hesitant to reach out for bill assistance if they need it?
So first off, I appreciate the the topic because it's something that we're thinking a lot about. So first, we don't require social security numbers for any of our assistance programs. But that doesn't mean everybody knows that. And so when we talk about making sure that we're connecting with different community organizations. One, these are organizations, you know, within which our customers have already established a sense of safety. So we can get good communication through those channels. We can ensure that we're hitting those underrepresented groups. So there's a lot we can do there. Great.
Um, are we assuming that like he was going away?
No, this just in. So our latest update, I think, came from this morning. We are anticipating that funding will be intact. It will be lesser than it was last year and certainly lower than it was the couple of years coming out COVID where there was some additional funding. So the funding is down, but we are expecting they're they're sending out the initial tranche of applications this week. And so those will hit senior and disabled. But it will be significantly delayed. We're anticipating that the general population will not be getting into the queue until maybe late January. Hopefully they'll start getting caught up in February, but we're not expecting elimination.
Great. Another question about prepay. So can you explain a little bit about how prepay works? And my my question is specifically, if you're somebody who faces financial challenges, how do you have the funds to prepay?
So I will say this, like prepay is a program that I wouldn't say is that's not just a limited income program. That's going to be something that works for some people, though not for everyone. There's lots of folks that maybe aren't limited income, but they have irregular income cycles. So that could be a fix there. With prepay, however, I think there are a couple of prerequisites that make those programs really work and that is direct access. So that may not be a great program for somebody who struggles to get online and connect with their account. Because you need to be to stay abreast of what your balance is. I think Frank wants to weigh in on that one. He loves.
Commissioner Slossberg, I think where it really has an advantage is when you have somebody who's limited income with limited funds, the fact that they can pay $20 at a time or $25 at a time instead of a full monthly bill all the time, it breaks their payment up into more manageable chunks. And also gets them out of the sort of the constant fees mode, delayed fees, et cetera. So it's it's more of a pay as you go, which which breaks this up into manageable chunks for them.
I question on slide 55. I just want a clarification. Where you do the bill change illustrations. And my question was, I think this, I think what you said was somebody who has low usage, the reason that their bill proportionally is going up more than the moderate or high usage has to do with the fact that our usage charges are going down. Is that right? Like the the flat, the flat fee is going up, but the per kilowatt hour fee charge is going down.
Correct.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. And I mean, that does seem like a little unfair, maybe, right? If you have lower usage, that your percentage of your bill is going to be higher than somebody with moderate to high usage, but I understand why that is.
Yeah, and people that use more do have higher bills than people that use less. It's just that percent.
And then the last thing I want to say is that on slide 57, we've seen this chart so many times with the where EWEB fits in with our average monthly electric bill. And I know that there's a, you know, there's a lot of pressure for us to stay in the middle or, you know, we 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 talk about like relative where we are to other people. And I guess I just want to bring up that like here we talk about that and we're at a higher level and we're looking at the budget. But like for people that pay their bill, it doesn't matter that we're a little bit lower than Seattle or, you know, like your budget is your budget. And so I just wanted to highlight that, like we we can tout where we are in all of these things, but if you live here and this is what you're used to paying, it doesn't matter that we pay so much less than somebody else because that's just what what we have to do every month. So that's that's it for now. I'll pass it on to somebody else. But again, thank you so much. I think that was a fantastic presentation.
Tim.
Thank you, Jim. I just want to echo my fellow commissioners that have gone so far of this is the the work. This is the incredible outcome of a lot of intention and dedication to to such hard conversations and digging into not fully realized information or not fully public information or not like fully published information. I play a lot of hidden role games and you're working with imperfect information a lot like this is exactly what that looks like and trying to put thought behind it and intention behind it and make that leap when it's needed and in a very intellectual ways is is seen and it's here on on page and it's 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 great. So I just want to say thank you. This is quite literally my day job as well. So thank you as well. And I, that's what I'm seeing here of of supporting low income folks directly in particular. I did have just a few questions and clarifications. And I want to echo what Commissioner Carlson said too. I hope that this is and Commissioner Barowski, that I hope that this is the beginning of of a continued effort, maybe not even. that I hope that this is the beginning of of a continued effort, maybe not even with just like low income, but but other parts of our budgets as well. And so I just, I really want to commend you, and I hope that you walk away from this meeting with that that support. I wanted to ask on page 20, for bill assistance on both late and providing bill assistance for folks who have been late or with late fees or disconnect fees. On the right, it says are two times more likely to have late fees or four times more likely to be disconnected. Is that in that same year, in that same fiscal year, or is that cumulative? Is that over 10 years? What's what's the date range or data?
Data set is over a two-year period.
Okay.
So it's over that entire period.
Great. I just wanted to confirm that. In two page, on page 22, I don't know why I tried to say it like that. The, one of the challenges was asking customers on getting timely response from eWeb. Can I ask just like clarification on on that where, like, what is your sense of what folks are saying of how easy or how difficult it is to get a timely response from eWeb?
I think that's the reason that we want to continue with our direct customer engagement in 2026. We can, we can extrapolate takeaways in this data, but we don't know until we have follow-up focus groups and hear from them directly. We can get a sense over the majority feel this way. This is really challenging. I also found it really interesting, like, in understanding program eligibility. You have just as many customers saying, this is the most challenging aspect as you do people saying, no sweat. That tells me there's something going on there. So I don't have a good answer for that. But I think that's the very reason we want to continue with our, you know, direct customer engagement on this and other topics.
Great. Yeah, I was just curious if you already had like a preliminary thought about that. But yeah, it it just stood out to me of, it seemed to be kind of average across the board. So I I really, I really appreciate that. And then I, I mean, on this slide, too, you know, understanding the eligibility requirements and then gathering the the financial document. This is not a unique thing to eWeb. I I work in rent assistance as well. This is a very similar thing across that board, across medical. This is not a a a unique thing for eWeb. But I understand the challenge of trying to to acknowledge it and make it easier for within our system. So I I recognize the Sisyphean project that's ahead of you on on that. I I'm sure I'll have more questions, and we haven't even like talked the details of the budget. But I I'll I'll pause there and just say it like, real and truly great work. This is incredible and and deeply appreciated. Thank you.
John Brown.
Well, thank you. All the sentiments have been previously said. I think you get 10 on this. You guys have done an excellent job. And the good thing is, you've demonstrated that you can do that. Now you can implement it just as easily. So good for you. I agree with Mindy's comment about the portal. You know, I it it's, I'm, I don't have a digital watch for a reason. It's so challenging. It's, I hate it. And I'll just cut to the chase. And hopefully, you guys are going to be able to simplify that a little bit. There's a comment about the Spanish speaking community or the people that may worry about their status. I've worked with eWeb staff and others that are in that community by helping them get through some hurdles. And so far, we, I have nothing but the highest level of praise. They bring in communicators. They bring in people that can explain it. Some of these people have limited capacity to to comprehend what's going on, and you do an excellent job. So I think you're doing good there. I am wondering, you know, I'm starting to become a little bit pessimistic about AMI. And we talked about prepay. And so I assume that when people are, one of the aspects of AMI was to be able to let people prepay and then go in and see where their consumption is. And so I guess that option is currently available to people. Is that correct? That they can go online? Is AMI that implemented to that level?
Are you asking if prepay is currently available?
Well, yeah, I know prepay is available, but can we go online and see where they are? If I give you $200, can I see on the 10th of the month how much of that I've used?
So so Commissioner Brown, the AMI, the metering is a piece of the technology that's needed to be able to do that. The other is having an upgraded customer portal to be able to do that, including the potential of certain communications tools like like texting, so that a customer will know when their their prepay is about to run out. And some of those tools are in kind of the finalization steps. Of course, AMI is is there, but there's a few other pieces that have to come together before we actually formally launch prepay. But it's it's very close, and all those pieces are coming together.
Okay. And lastly, my one question, I'm sure you answered this last time. I keep wondering why every year on our large water users, we don't have a rate increase for Willamette Water, but every, almost everybody else does. Are we continuing to overcharge them? Or what's the basis for that?
So this year, we had an extensive water leak over a period of time. So when we were looking at the data, there was some some issues with the consistency in their usage data. So they were showing a decrease. And instead of implementing that, we deferred that for a year to avoid the rate shock of going down and then up when we have the more consistent data. So it was an anomaly that had occurred just based on their specific circumstance.
So it's true, but it's been two years in a row, I think, that we haven't raised it. We didn't raise them last year either.
Yes, I I'm not sure the exact duration of the leak, but I think it was over that period of time that was going for a series of months. So I think it was an extended period of time.
It was our leak or theirs?
It was on the, out of their consumption on theirs, on their system.
It was, it was on their side of the line?
Yeah.
I thought our policy, I mean, when my line leaks, I have to pay. And so I'm just curious, maybe this for time for another conversation, but why they're getting a pass on that? I mean, it's a private water company. And, you know, my line leaks, I use 135,000 gallons. You guys charge me for it. Why wouldn't we charge them for that?
Oh, so that's a, that's a separate, I guess, issue. For, this is based on just purely the water consumption that flows into their cost of service. For an individual customer, a leak is going to be aggregated with all the other residential customers since they're kind of an individual contract customer. Theirs is viewed individually. So just the anomaly in their consumption pattern.
So just to clarify, they did, they paid for that water. It was a leak on their side. But what we observed is that it skewed the expected volumes coming from from them, which indicated that they would be, that their rate should go down. But we know that that consumption was an anomaly and that next year it it would very likely pop back up. So we had skewed consumption data, and that's why the recommendation is to hold them at zero. But they did pay for water.
So so Deborah, I mean, just to put it in language, I understand. They used, they used more water than we thought they did. Therefore, their volumetric charge per gallon would be artificially low if we went by that piece of data. And so rather than decrease it, we just said, that was an anomaly. Let's keep it where it is, as opposed to reduce it because it looked like they were dividing their costs over over more water. So the rate would be changed. That's.
That is a better way to say what I tried to say. Thank you, Frank.
I appreciate that because I I'm sure that, you know, when when like Vinita or somebody else says, why did my wholesale water rate go up and theirs didn't? And now I can have at least a reason to to say that. So thank you very much. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. So I already sang the praises of the process. Couple of things that I'm really excited about are the new new and enhanced strategies. The new chronic financial burden, one that you you talked about, and the financial hardship ones. I think that's that's great, that we're we're looking at where we can can push the boundaries. And and that was very exciting to me. Couple of questions. When you talked about the the problem of people coming and finishing out the applications, where where do they do that? Do they have to come to Rock? Do they go to City Hall? Where is the the application process happening?
So there's a couple of different ways to apply. You can apply through the portal, which is helpful because you get your account authenticated, things like that. Or you can call into the call center. When that happens, we don't have a way to take in income documentation. So we can't use categorical eligibility unless we get their application and see that they have likey. After we go through and assess who needs to be referred over to the agencies, they get a phone call from either Campbell Center or Catholic Community Center. At that time, they are scheduled, you know, sometimes to be a couple of weeks out, what have you, to come in and sit down and bring their documentation. So the actual intake appointment occurs onsite at those facilities. We also have a paper application that is always available in 12 months out of the year for senior and disabled to ensure that they always have ready access and they can mail that in. So those are really the channels that exist today.
Okay. The second question that I have is, you know, one of the slides said that that if one of the the slides said that assistance goes further if you're just an electric customer as opposed to if you've got all four of those. Last fall, summer, fall, City of Eugene increased their stormwater fees. It was a discussion that we had about the fire fee and all of that. When the fire fee was proposed, there was talk about them helping out limited income people. Have we, have they come across with some dollars that are coming from the increased stormwater fees? And if not, I've got a nice whip that I can use.
Well, if you can get more money, that would be great. But in the process of reevaluating the the service fee that they pay us for doing their billing and renewing that contract, we did assess a more appropriate level based on their percentage of the bill that now gets passed through to them as a part of that charge. So the city is contributing more towards customer care expenses.
You don't have to give it the off the top of my head, but it would be nice to know what that dollar figure is on a, on an annual basis. Because that was one of the things that when they were proposing the fire fee, it was going to be about $350,000 that they were planning on contributing to low income to offset the low income. They didn't say how that was going to happen, but I want to make sure that that was kind of the grand bargain when we went in and they said, okay, we're not going to do it as a as a fee on an eWeb bill, but we are, it is on an eWeb bill because it's stormwater. And I just want to make sure that 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 part of the bargain is being adhered to. And are we the ones that are administering that? And and what is the the appropriate amount that that's doing it? Because that fee is raising almost $6 million to all of our customers. So it it made me that that slide right there showed me that how much of the other parts of the the bill are affected on some of our low income people. So.
We will follow up with the number that was calculated as a part of their monthly billing.
Okay, thank you. I will go around for round two.
Okay, some of my nitty gritty questions. So on the average monthly billing, it's different than the set billing because it, does it adjust every month? So it looks like the last 12 months, it's a rolling average of sorts. Is that?
Yep, that's absolutely correct. So it recalculates every single month rather than once a year. So you don't have the exact same payment, but you get a nice smooth payment.
Okay. Do customers who are on that previous set payment plan still have the option then to continue doing that? Or will they automatically be rolled to the average monthly billing?
No. So in a grand compromise, we are going to allow customers who have participated in budget billing successfully for years to remain on that program, but we are not open to new enrollments. And we'll definitely be encouraging folks onto the average monthly billing.
Okay. The categorical eligibility, you mentioned some legislative solutions. I know we just adopted our kind of push and and really the short session is not the place for that. But I would like to flag that as an area that we should look at. I think it's a great idea if others are supportive.
Yeah, Commissioner Carlson, it is something that Jason and I are working on a number of different fronts to gain access to the appropriate data. As you know, there can be sensitivity around access to data at almost every level of the political world. But we're looking at, we're working with Anna and particularly Jason on what some avenues are so that we, for very good purposes, could get access to data to do this categorical eligibility assessment quickly, easily, affordably, you know, with a really low administrative cost. So that is on our list to pursue.
It seems like it could benefit utilities across the state and other organizations across the state that do this sort of work. It's, I I think people expect us to be more organized and connected than we are because of all those sensitivities. But if there was an opportunity to have a singular system that benefits everyone across the state, I think it would be in everybody's best interest to lower the pay cost. Nice. Thank you. 52% are electric only. How does that? How does that work? Really? That's surprising to me.
So predominantly, those are going to be apartments, some of your multiplexes where they have a shared meter, that sort of thing?
Oh, okay. So they they are paying for water. It's just through the.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, yeah, and that was just an expression of what is on the bill? How many services are on the bill? And how far does that $280 go?
Got it. Okay. The cost differential for the time, so you showed slide 55 on our handout or kind of combined handout. It has the the different bill charges. And it looks like there's a couple of different things potentially happening. I just want to understand this graph a little bit better. So this is the total bill, including the basic charge. Is that correct? Or does it not include the basic charge? It does include the basic charge. Okay.
Oh, yeah, correct.
So then it looks like there is, in the proposal for the limited income, like chronically financial challenge, challenge, there is some some adjustments to account for, okay, you have a smaller bill. But you don't, since you have a smaller bill, you're not getting as big of an impact. Because it looks like there's, from my calculation, in this first column with the 580 kilowatt hours, they would get $204 throughout the year, whereas the high user would get $252 in these scenarios throughout the year. Is that, I I just took the difference between kind of the, oh, I I guess I took the wrong difference. Sorry, I just realized I took the current versus EEC. Can you just talk a little bit about those those two differences, though? It shouldn't make too much of a difference.
The green line at the bottom?
Yeah. Yeah. How mu- how much are we allocating? Is it the same per kilowatt hour? Or is it different per kilowatt hour for those chronically stressed individuals, chronically financially stressed individuals?
So this was really just an effort to capture, if you were to spread ECC as it exists today out on a monthly basis, this would be the impact. Because we know the board will often ask, okay, well, how's, how does this affect bill assistance customers? And and all that thing. In the future, when we have multiple and more tailored tools, we actually will have a program that would apply on a monthly basis. And you could see that, how it has a direct impact on electric and water charges. This was purely for illustrative purposes.
Okay, so it doesn't say like, all right, if you are in this level of stress or income level, then you get X amount of dollars per year. Because if we're increasing our, you know, 500,000, I'm just curious how we're, how behind the scenes we're determining how much each of those different categories get.
Yeah, it's 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 a fair question and one that we're really eager to start drilling into. This this presentation today was really sharing our conceptual framework.
Okay.
We're going to hit the workshop, and there's a lot of details from what are our eligibility caps to how do we want to break these these tiers up? Like, that is work that has yet to be done. We're going to, you know, have some fun math to play with our friends in finance. But this was really just a conceptual framework tonight.
Okay, so when do we anticipate that we'll have that framework kind of fleshed out? Will you bring that back to us or after we vote on it? Will you bring that back to us or after we vote on it tonight, you'll take it and then report back at some point? Or do we have to vote on it again?
So there's, um, well, part of what you're voting on tonight is the budget capacity for which we can implement these things. And, and so that, that's kind of the ask tonight.
Okay.
Um, going forward, uh, the timeline is going to vary depending on what you're talking about. There's some things that we're going to have ready pretty quick. So like average monthly billing, we're in the final stages of testing and things like that. Um, you know, pre, prepaid Frank's point earlier, there's some prerequisites to getting those in place. So throughout the year, but, um, as it relates to the affordability program, um, really with that additional 500,000, we talked about, um, you know, the city of Eugene's funding increase and all those things. That's what we need in order to pursue these. Um, so the, the details will be working out throughout 2026.
Okay. So it's not like, all right, when the new rates go into effect in February, then we will have those programs. It's going to take some additional time to work that all out, which is fine. I understand.
But we will have ECC available to our entire customer base, again, being, beginning in January. So
Okay.
we will continue to have resources and energy share as well.
Great. Um, I also wanted to note that the, one of the, another positive of the prepaid system, because I think that we still require a deposit if you're not on prepaid, correct? How much is the deposit typically?
Juice.
Yeah. It's not for everybody that we require a deposit, but if there's a situation with a customer where we do feel like a deposit is needed, then it's usually two times the, the average monthly bill. And so prepaid does eliminate the need for.
Yeah. Cause if you're, instead of putting it into the deposit, you can just pay it and then use that can, to continue the, the process forward. Okay. Um, and then two quick, quick comments on some little data things. So I did notice on page 238 of our board packet. So this is away from the low income assistance and more into the, the other budget level of things, but I think we're voting on the general package, correct?
Yes.
Voting on all of them. Okay. So, um, there was a pretty significant change in the net metering rates for renewable net metering. It went from point 07 cents to point 039 cents per kilowatt hour. Um, that's a pretty significant difference. I just wanted, if somebody could talk about that change and why that's so much lower.
Yes.
Than it has been in the past.
That's, um, um, the last year, we switched the, we had a change in the methodology proposed for the avoided to align the, um, the distributed generation rates with the avoided cost. We held off implementing it for a year, um, because there had been a dramatic fall in wholesale market prices. So that theory behind this distributed generation rate is we pass through the value of, um, customers' generation at wholesale market rates. So there had been a spike for a couple of years that wholesale prices were high. When those started falling, we kind of reevaluated the approach and looked at instead of wholesale market prices using the avoided costs that, um, that's published every two years. And, um, and so we're with that alignment, um, it had a reduction for, um, the wholesale power and then the rec value split out. So that customers that, um, provide recs to E web have the, that, um, so customers that net meter maintain their own recs. So they hold that value. So a portion of the value associated with the distributed generation is selling the power and a portion is the renewable attributes. So, um,
Did, did, were customers in this process, they, were they notified that we were going to make this change to almost half the, the payback on it?
And that was part of the reason for deferring a year, the implement.
Okay. So they're aware of this change.
Um, yeah.
Okay. I, I just, you know, it's really challenging for me. I know that, that our costs fluctuate. Typically you think that costs go up. So, um, the benefit that they would get to do a payback on a major installation would be kind of more set. So dropping it by half is, is kind of alarming to me just because I, I feel, you know, I feel for the people who made these investments. Now they're not going to get the payback on it. I guess that's part of the process.
Yeah. And the majority of the payback would be the offsetting the retail rates portion. So I think customers are encouraged to size the system. So they're getting that benefit of sizing it towards their actual load and not the value that's sold in wholesale markets. So if they're appropriately sizing the system to their load, then that values at the full retail rate. So they're getting a full offsetting of retail costs. It's the oversized
Got it.
systems, um, that we've, I think tried to effectively, or tried to communicate better with customers to size the systems appropriately. I think sometimes they're sold larger systems. Um, on the benefit, using that wholesale market.
System.
Yeah. Yes. It does kind of something that I think we're trying to communicate with.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. Thank you for the clarification there. It helped me better understand when we get asked about changes like that. And then, um, my last quick comment was on, um, page 269, this is just a very piggity little thing, but I think if, if we accept the basic charge that's listed on 269, it has a, it doesn't have a deletion. It just has a four, maybe it is showing a deletion, but you can't see it because it's on the four. I just want to make sure that it ends up being 50 and not 450 dollars for the basic charge. So that's just a, a tiny little.
Oh, that's transparency for you there.
Not sure.
Carlson.
How that works out, but let's, let's not do that when we vote tonight. Okay. Thanks.
Frank, you wanted to talk about.
I was just, the, the solar rate was, was a, a great question, Commissioner Carlson. I just, just for a little bit of context, most of the last 10 or 15 years, it's been closer to this number. Um, we've seen a little bit of fluctuation in the last couple of years and, um, to, to Adam's point, really a majority of the value comes in displacing the real retail rate portion. So, um, yeah, that I just wanted to point out a little bit of historical context.
Thank you.
Second round, Mindy.
Yeah. Greg, I have a question for you, just so you don't feel left out here. Um, so on slide 44, the implications for the E web programs. So something that we have, the board has asked for a lot, or our assumption has been that one of the reasons that, um, our lower income customers are paying more is because their housing is energy inefficient and we just need to offer more energy efficient programs to them or their landlords. And that will kind of help even out, even out their bills or make it so that we don't have to offer as much assistance. But what you're, in your presentation, what I gleaned from it is that's not necessarily true. And, um, maybe coupled with the previous presentation that we had several months ago is that if we're really looking as a, as a whole, to get the most bang for our buck in terms of energy efficiency, that really is with commercial, our larger commercial. There's, there's a lot more, um, energy efficiency to be saved there if we invest there. Um, and so I just want to make sure that that assumption is right. And that here you say like, we already have robust programs in terms of single family homes. And then the idea is that in a lot of apartments, some of these things also are already, there's already energy efficiency in an apartment building or multifamily dwelling. Is that true?
There are a few questions.
Yeah, sorry.
So, um, remind me if I don't address them all. Um, so number one, uh, commercial conservation, our, our cost per kilowatt hour of savings is generally much, much lower. However, we're not just doing conservation for a resource. We're doing conservation to help make bills affordable. Um, we're doing conservation as safe carving. We're doing conservation to help customers have more reliable equipment. Uh, there's a number of reasons to do conservation. So what we need to do is make sure that we have a variety of programs so that all of our customers have something available to them in order to participate. Uh, so the residential programs, they're more expensive per kilowatt hour, but they're not going away. There was a question in there. Remind me what the other questions were.
Well, it was just, just to make sure, because I feel like one of the assumptions that we've had as a board or one of the things that we've been asking for is, um, the idea was that one of the major ways to help people lower their bills is to increase energy efficiency. And so therefore we need to fund those programs more or offer more incentives because that is the thing that's going to lower their bills. But what I'm hearing from you is that, um, that might be part of the, part of the solution, but that's that it's not like we have all of these dilapidated rental units and that's why customer bills are so high.
I'm certainly not denying that dilapidated rental units exist. We know that's true. What we are saying is the bulk of our energy savings or the most um, most bang for your buck, the most energy savings for your investment is going to come from single family homes. It's going to come from those detached units, whether they're rental or not. We can tell you that. Excuse me, just for a second. Energy efficiency makes sense in a lot of places, in a lot of ways. Um, if you look at we bring up seven. If you look at slide 37, um, particularly A, that's an apartment with electric heat. So um, there's some classic shapes for, um, that follow outside of our temperature over the year, uh, for heating and cooling. Now, if you look at the single family home in C at the bottom left, you'll see this really, really large hump over the winter. Well, that apartment in A also has electric heat, but their heating load is much, much lower. Perhaps they have, uh, someone above them, below them and on both sides. So if I took, if I had $5,000 and I took it and I invested it in the, in the single family home with a really high level of usage, um, I'm likely to get savings, you know, on the order of 40, $50 a month. It's going to make sense for them to do. It's going to make sense for us. It's going to be a wise investment. If I spend the same amount of money in that apartment in A, I might save five, $10 a month. Now, if I do that, I, I might as well just give them $20 a month and, and they would be better off. And we would have that $5,000 to invest more wisely in something else. It's not that we don't want to help that customer, but we think the dollar for dollar impact is going to be very low. So that means we're going to spend a lot of money that we can't now spend elsewhere. And that customer is not really going to see much benefit. So we have to take that into consideration when we look at um, what we, we want to have programs available to everyone. But if we really wanted the best bang for our buck, we would be targeting the houses and any dwelling units that use a lot. There are apartments that use 10, um, 25,000 kilowatt hours a year. There are apartments that look like C. Um, some of them, we would want to target those. Those, hey, that's an apartment above a business that doesn't have anything above it. That's, that's what something like that looks like. So the idea is we have a limited amount of funds and we are using those to meet a lot of competing objectives and we're really doing our best to provide the best value to our spectrum of customers. I hope that helps.
Yep.
And I'm happy to, is there another question in there?
Uh, I think that's, that's good for now.
We always like to hear, um, any ideas for new programs and anything, um, else that we can do. We're very nimble and we like to adjust our programs to best meet our customers' needs.
Thank you.
Frank?
I was just going to weigh in and characterize this a little bit. Um, Commissioner Schlossberg, I think we, what you're hearing tonight is the fact that we're going to approach our programs, which include limited income, energy efficiency in a more prescriptive, uh, and more intentional way as opposed to just saying, well, let's do rentals. Well, rental stock is a piece of it. But as you know, and what we showed is that there's very specific reasons why we want to do some rental stock and not other rental stock based on the opportunities that it creates. And so really trying to think about the limited income programs and the, the energy efficiency programs as portfolios as opposed to sort of one size fits all, um, makes a lot more sense for the organization and for the community when we're trying to balance the investments that we make and how we use our customers' money, um, for those purposes. And so um, really part of what, what some of the questions now are getting into is the actual program design, which we're glad you're excited about that. Uh, and we'll be continuing these conversations around those, some of those details, but think of it as more of a portfolio intentional approach as opposed to, well, it's just a, it's just sort of this monolithic program. And I think both, um, both, well, all three presentations were, were intended to kind of pull that out.
Yep.
Tim?
Thank you, Chair. I was really excited for a round two because I forgot a few things in my round one. So buckle up. No, I'm kidding. Um, but, uh, so, um, I wanted to make a statement. We saw that chart that's, or the, the chart that said, um, who's primarily accessing the care credits? And it was mainly folks who are exclusively on electric. And I'm just, I, I would be interested in seeing what that might look, not tonight, but what that would look like kind of across the board, not just with the low income assistance program, but just in general, where all of our rate users are. Is the majority of our rate users on electric only? Are the majority of our users on a, a mixed? And just, I, I would find that interesting of what that split looks like for folks exclusively accessing uh, with the limited income, um, program if, and, and just our, our users writ large. So that's just a statement. No expectation of an answer tonight. Um, I, uh, I wanted to talk about the portal as well. And this is something that I hear a lot, uh, that you, you mentioned of, of folks who have um, challenges with electronics, folks who has challenges with access. Um, that's something that I hear a lot as well. Um, and, uh, I'm, I, I see with the, um, care credit, I, I pretended like I was going in to apply it for myself. And one of the challenging is, is I know my phone and I can access it really well. So I understand the challenge if I don't have that. And that's, that's such a high burden to, to beat. And also a positive is that it automatically filled out all my information. So I don't have to think about this. So that's, you know, a, a positive way to address that. A, a, a con was like, I had to scroll a little bit to find where it was. Um, so it's just navigating those really like tiny intricacies, um, which I, it sounds like you already are doing. Um, uh, I wanted to also comment on prepaid. And I think a hidden element that's here are folks who are, um, have severe disabilities or folks who are seniors or folks who are working with caseworkers who the, uh, they themselves are, may not necessarily be the one paying the bill, but someone on behalf of them would be paying that bill and a prepaid would be incredible for that. Um, just to be able to front load those, those dollars and say, you're good. Don't worry about it. We're all good. Um, I, I did have a question of would prepaid, I heard there might be a conversation of if dollars are starting to diminish or, or lessen, would there still be notification of your bill is being paid even though you have prepaid set up? Are there reminders that your bill is still being paid in some form or fashion?
So those are really the, um, uh, logistical aspects that, you know, will delay prepay for longer than say average monthly billing. Um, because, uh, both, you know, text, text alerts will be really important as well as, you know, app-based access. Um, I don't have an updated timeline on those pieces, but no.
Well, I mean, prepaid in general is not just, you know, a vanilla program. Like we can do a lot of different things. We have a lot of different choices to make around prepaid. And so some of the things that you're bringing up are choices that we have. Do we want to allow guests pay a prepaid? Do you receive a text message? And when do you, what if somebody's paying on your behalf? Those are all pieces that when we build the program, we'd go into it. So 2026 is, is our year to build prepaid.
Got it. Thank you. I am extremely excited. So thank you. Um, and I'm, I really look forward to the details on that. Um, I, I just want to, I want to voice my strong support of self attestation. I see a lot of other utilities have this program as well. Um, and it, uh, barrels through the administrative process that for a lot of folks on both sides, that conversation. And from, I mean, basic conversations that I've had too with our utility partners across the West Coast, it, it has the, the amount of, of fraud or, or problematic behaviors that happen is so miniscule that it's, it's not even problematic. So I, I'd be excited. I, I'd be excited to see what safety nets we're putting into to just make sure we're addressing everything properly, but also it just seems like a good idea. I did have, I, I'm concerned with this conversation around. Let me have to find the slide again, but on the implications of the eWeb programs. Because I think a piece of what we're not seeing that's here, and that'd be slide forty-four, excuse me, if I, if you want to upgrade. But it's, it's who is accessing the low income support credits. Are they renters or are they homeowners? And I say that specifically because there's a, a data set that was released by the city of Eugene that showed the average household income of homeowners is around seventy thousand dollars a year. And the average income for tenants is around thirty-two thousand dollars a year. And so I say that of, of the efficiency of limited savings and dollars. I, I I am not an expert in this particular field of what does it look like to save dollars in terms of the energy usage? But what I can say is that a savings for an apartment or for a renter, just statistically based on that information would go farther for that renter and for that household than it would for a single family home or homeowner. And a secondary aspect of that would be potentially and even permanently removing them from accessing, needing to access limited income support. So we, on two different financial ends would be supporting a household. So this, this one, then this, a conversation on this side in particular has brought me a little bit of concern just to make sure we're getting a full picture of this conversation, but I, uh, I, I, I just, I wanted to express that, that concern there is, is, is the, the household income of the folks that we're supporting and, and being able to provide support to as well.
Would you like a response to that?
I would love one, yes, please.
Two things. One is that we're not saying that we don't want to do conservation in multifamily buildings. We want to do it where it's most effective. And one of those places hit that new building. Hit five hundred units at a time that are going to exceed code by twenty percent. Another is what I brought up on the last, my last slide, which was bulk retrofits, which means don't do the inefficient efficiency on one apartment at a time. Go in and do the whole thing when it makes the most sense to do that. And when the owner has that willingness to do so. The other one. I should probably stop there because now the, the other one, I wasn't too clear on exactly what the question was.
No, no, bro. I'm, I, I, I I'm not providing a question to ask. So I just, I wanted to express that thought. And I'm, I mean, maybe I'm making a direct correlation that might be lesser, but on, on slide thirty-six, I see, you know, the second one says tenant households. On the data shows tenant households on average use two to five percent less energy. And then the third line is eWeb has a higher share of efficiency programs for detached rental properties. And I'm wondering if there's a direct correlation there of there is less energy being used because higher high efficiency projects are being used in rental properties more often than not. So that's like, I'm, I'm wondering if there is a direct correlated line that exists there. I also am recognizing that it's eight twenty at night and I'm talking about a two to five percent energy conversation during a budget conversation. So I, I'm, I'm happy to kind of pause my, my thought there.
I do have a quick answer if you'd like, please. Number two, the tenant households do, this is across the board for all housing types. There is not a direct correlation between number two and number three because number three is speaking specifically to detached rental properties. Those are houses and complexes and manufactured homes.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the answer. I will pause there. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Brown?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. On late fees and disconnects. Are we using late fees and disconnect fees as a revenue driver?
We do account for them in the budget, but they represent the cost of that we incur when folks pay late or, and/or we have to disconnect. So they are a cost-based fee.
So as, as somebody, and it's been a while since I've had to pay late fees, but I have paid late fees to, to utilities in the past. And it seems to me that that might be another area of, I mean, I'm sure that, that our customer care people have, have authority to waive those on certain, certain instances, but as an area where our costs are probably less than what it actually is that we're charging on a late fee or no, well, well, yes, you said, but I mean, what, what is a late fee? What? Give me an example of how much somebody would be charged on a late fee of a, of a hundred dollar bill.
So a late fee for the majority of our residential customers is five dollars.
Five dollars. Okay.
So we're addressing that. I think at the end of this presentation, we're, we're addressing that through a prepay program where late fees would go away and absolutely CSAs have the ability to waive late fees for a multitude of reasons.
So I mean, I, I just see that as an area where, okay, you know, late fees and then disconnect. Obviously in the past, a disconnect was more costly. But now that we have smart meters, hopefully the disconnect costs are going down. Have those been adjusted?
So if there is a communicating smart meter in place, we have with SAP and with our smart meters, we have automated disconnect, reconnect, and there are no fees associated.
There's no fees associated. So the only time you would get charged a disconnect fee is if somebody actually had to go out there and, and turn the, turn it back on. Okay, that's good to know. I was just looking at those as maybe and a resource to put towards those if, if they were just, if we were charging more than we were, we were collecting. Okay, that's all that I have. Okay, I'll let you go, but then we, we really need to move on to the actual budgeting approval.
I, I just had one question that I was going to be willing to make the motions on these. The Mackenzie Valley pricing. So we have to vote on prices. We don't know, you know, there's some other logistical things around when the timing of a transfer might happen. So are we voting as twenty twenty, is twenty-five, twenty-five the vote on the Mackenzie Valley pricing to go into effect in February? Or is that just to go into effect if the other doesn't happen, even if that goes in May or October?
Yeah. So the Mackenzie Valley customers will be considered an, a standard eWeb customer in February. So they'll see the same rate increase that every other customer sees in the February action. The way that it's structured is in the middle of the year, if the transfer doesn't go into effect, then those rates will go into effect. So that would be the kind of action now is to give people enough lead time to prepare for that this is coming if this transaction doesn't go through. So we're kind of giving them heads up and being transparent, but not convoluted it with doing that rate change now and then right before the transfer.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, move to approve resolution.
All right, hold on this one, woman. Commissioner, uh, before we do that, Deborah has, we, we received something in our packet regarding new legislation as far as, uh, declaring conflicts of interest. So I want Deborah to speak to that before we, we move on these resolutions.
Thank you, President Borowski. I did want to call out, this is new, uh, this year for the commissioners and folks who are attending this board meeting that is a part of approving resolution twenty-five twenty. That's the budget resolution. Commissioners are disclosing a personal conflict of interest by voting on a budget that includes a de minimis monthly stipend for themselves. That stipend is permitted and the disclosure is required under state statute.
Okay. So do we need to declare that personally or not?
No, this is the disclosure of voting on it. I just wanted to make sure that we called it out this year. It is new.
Okay, thank you. Now you can make the motion.
Okay. Uh, move to approve resolution number twenty-five twenty, the twenty, twenty-six budget.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I have some discussion.
Oh, wait. Go ahead, John.
I, I'm discussion. Um, under twenty-five twenty. Earlier this evening, I received an email from a constituent, I think in your ward, John, about the budget and some amendments that they were proposing. I didn't have time to, to digest it, to read it, to, to do anything yet, but I did forward it to Anne and she's distributed it to all of you. I just wanted to make that for the record that you do have it. And it's suggestions about identifying FDEs and things such as that. But like I say, it's, it's, it's more than I could handle because I got it right before the meeting started. So I just wanted for the record to let that know.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving resolution twenty-five twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, uh, move to approve resolution twenty-five twenty-one water prices.
Discussion? John?
No.
Okay. All seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Resolution number twenty-five twenty-two, a move to approve electric prices.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And move to approve resolution number twenty-five twenty-five, the Mackenzie Valley pricing, should that not go through otherwise?
Discussion?
Do have something for discussion.
Yes.
So, um, the resolution states that that, um, rate increase will go up June first, twenty twenty-six. But if we're in good faith negotiation with Lane Electric and it's not going to happen until the fall, are we still planning on for that chunk of time raising their rates or will we keep it the same?
The intent would be, um, to only implement that as the transaction's not going through. So I think if it was a clear sign that it's not moving forward, then those go into effect. Otherwise, it's the general managers to discretion to postpone that till later in the year.
Is there a way to codify that or amend it?
Should we amend that motion?
So, so Commissioner, our intent is to shoot for the May first. If, if it looks like, um, early in the year that that is not going to happen for one reason or another, we won't know that until probably first quarter, second quarter. Our intent would be to come back to the board, um, if we're going to change this, but our plan is to implement it June first.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? The only, the only discussion that I would have on that one was, that's a big pill. If, if we, if that did go in, I I would like to see that come back to the board. If, if it falls through a twenty percent increase on, on regular people of, of river, I would at least like to have the discussion of that. That, that's myself personally. I don't know. I see three other head nods there. So I don't know what that means with this resolution. Do we table it? Would that be the best way to do this one?
You can do that. And then if the transfer is not looking promising, it could come back to the board. Now, um, the rates were, the cost of service was done with this class broken out as an upriver class.
Commissioner Borowski, there is no guarantee that even if this get, even if the work with Lane Electric gets postponed, that we wouldn't implement this for the very purposes that, that, uh, Deborah Hart just mentioned, that these are, these are recouping our costs. And we've known that these are our actual costs for, for quite a while and they are significantly higher than our in-town rates. And there's nothing that would say that we wouldn't implement these in June, even if we're looking at a fall transition. So, uh, it's because the budgets are built around that way. And we would have to do some further analysis if we do not plan to implement it at all.
And I'll just, I'll just come back to that. I didn't do a robust discussion on these, on these upriver rates with the, with the thought that we weren't going to need to implement them. And so for me, the discussion needs to happen. Whether it's gradualization or whatever, I would like to have, at least have a discussion and, and let, let staff make their case like they have already, but also hear from the board as, as far as how we would like to see them implemented. That's myself.
I personally would love to be transparent and give as much notice as possible because I think people actually pay attention to it. And then the upriver people will be more engaged in the process to move the other transaction forward personally, because that is the alternative. These are the two alternatives. We, we find efficiencies by moving that, that pool of customers to another supplier that can provide it more efficiently because they're already there or we pay additional costs. And by that, I mean, the customers pay the additional costs. I, I'd like being more transparent at that upfront. I think if we table it right now, we're doing an injustice to those customers personally.
Indeed.
I think if we weren't planning on doing the, the transfer and this was just our, our plan, I think we would have done more outreach and more education around this issue. And I don't think that we've done that because our assumption is going to be, is that we're going to transfer the territory. So I would feel more comfortable if we were going to have a resolution with an amendment or some other language in there. I don't know if we do that tonight or it comes back next meeting, just saying that, um, this is a resolution based on the understanding that there's going to be a transfer. And if it doesn't happen, there'll be more discussion around this. I'm not saying that the rate shouldn't be raised, but I just feel like going about it this way, if the deal fell through and we ended up raising their rates by twenty percent, I just don't think that we've done a great job in communicating that with the upriver folks.
Tim?
Thank you. I would support an amendment that says something along those lines. I also didn't participate too deeply in this conversation because it felt sure that a deal was going to be moving forward, but also if there is a, uh, more than a, uh, if there is a concern that it won't, then I think that we, we are doing a disservice to the upper upper river folks. And I think, um, and the businesses that are up there. And I also, I, I'm not sure I'm in full support of using it as a negotiation tactic of either stay with eWeb or, and take this rate or go to Lane Electric and not have this rate hike. And, and that's just not something that I'm, I'm fully comfortable with.
John Brown, do you have any thoughts?
I do. Um, we discussed this a year ago and my cost, COSA said fourteen percent and we had this differential because we talked about this at quite length. Maybe somebody does, people don't remember that. Uh, and we had this discussion when we had our upriver meeting. And, uh, they didn't like it, but it was a, it was a fact. And because we talked about this, the same philosophy of what we do when we charge people for elevation charges for pumping the water up the hill. I don't think this is negotiating tactic. It's just that it's, you know, why are we subsidizing the people there? Because it costs us more money to provide the service. I, I agree with Commissioner Carlson that, that, um, that, you know, we move forward and, uh, and I guarantee you we'll hear if the deal doesn't go through, but I, to me, it's, it's not a, um, a tactic of saying you either go with Lane Electric or we're going to raise your rates twenty percent. We're going to raise your rates because that's just what it costs. And, uh, and we, if, if we don't, if they don't pay for it, then we subsidize it. And, uh, why is that fair to all our other low income and other people? Because they're paying for a service that they're not getting. So, um, I, I'm okay with the way it's written.
Totally.
Um, I just want to acknowledge that we were having this discussion back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty timeframe before the fires hit. And at that point, we decided to defer because there was such devastation in that area. So we have put that on hold for five years. And I think, if I recall, back in that time, it was a fourteen percent change. And now we're at a twenty percent change that we've been eating for five years. I think we've given enough leeway and consideration for the impact that was had up there, but it's time to be honest with everybody about that. And people frankly just don't pay attention until you vote and you put it out there. I mean, they just don't because it's not a thing that they should pay attention to. I mean, they just don't because it's not a thing that they should pay attention to. So again, this is why I'm supportive of moving this forward. If the other deal isn't going to go forward, we're going to know. It's not like they're going to hide it behind the scenes. We're going to have ample time to be able to adjust. And I don't think that we'll, I mean, this is something we will remember. So we can have further conversations if that doesn't go through.
Frank, you had your hand up?
Yes, so this is not a disingenuous tactic. This is a reflection of the true costs. It's, it's been that way for a number of years. And you can just pretty much assume that, that every time we have a service call, we're adding hours and miles of, of both time and expense. Commissioner Carlson is, is correct. The initial conversation was in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. We also tabled it again when COVID hit in twenty twenty-one. And we had another discussion at upriver. It was either last year or the year before. And so it, it is not a, a new proposal for the, the people upriver. It has been communicated over a number of years and it is a reflection of the true costs. If, I, I believe personally it's the right move to do, but I also respect that commissioners can say it's not time and, and we could, we could table it. But it has been communicated and it is a reflection of the true cost.
Okay, and I, and I understand that and I agree with that. My, my issue is that we've looked at other rates in the past when water was going up hi- higher and quicker than we thought. We, we sought for gradualization and that was brought back to us with a, with a proposal that was acceptable to this board. Yes, we, we need to recover our costs. I believe that that's appropriate. I just don't think that we've had the full discussion on a twenty percent increase. And so with that being said, I probably would vote against this motion, not on the merits, but because I don't feel I've had enough of a, of a conversation moving that forward. So I'm, the motion is on the floor. There hasn't been a motion to table it. So I'm looking at the other board members to see where you want to go with this.
All the question.
Okay, so the question's been called. The, the motion is to approve, oh my, now I got it, what number was it?
Twenty-twenty-five, sorry, twenty-five-twenty-five.
Twenty-five-twenty-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Two? Opposed? Three. So with that being said, do you want another motion or different direction? I guess is what I would ask from staff on this issue.
Then I think we have to have them redo the rates and we have to pay for that some other way.
Only if the transfer doesn't go through.
Well, there has to be.
I think that that, it wouldn't, that isn't there an opportunity for an amended budget mid-cycle?
The same thing as having the rates go in, but.
President Borowski, we will, we will look at our options relative to that. And I'll, I'll talk with staff about how we would present that to the board. There, there are cost impacts, there are budget impacts. And so we will come back to the board with something on that.
Okay, and best case scenario is the transfer goes through and this is all moved. And that's, that's, that's my, that's my hope is that, that we gave you authority to move forward and, and bring this to a, a resolution. And if that falls apart, then that has consequences. And one of the consequences, it may be rate raises up above and it may be us looking into an amended budget or something, so. Okay, next up on my agenda, I've got to get back in here because I went to sleep. Thank you, everybody. Next up is future board agendas and review.
Just a couple of noteworthy changes, commissioners, probably the, the one most noteworthy. Other than I'll, I'll point out, you all have a number of executive sessions and the other sec, sessions coming up. We did, in order to have robust discussions this evening, we did move the Lieberg decommissioning action plan from this month to next month. That actually aligned pretty well with staff's availability also. And so that was probably the most notable change that's, that's in the immediate future was we moved that to January. So other than that, we also have some discussions in the spring around some of the water watershed and state of the watershed, the plan. Those are, those are scheduled in April. I know Commissioner Brown was asking about the timing of that. So those, some of those discussions will be in the spring. I, I don't have any other things to add other than it's, it's out there.
Okay. Board wrap-up, so do you?
Well, I'm just curious on the, the future agendas and our executive sessions. Are any of those actually solidified? There's a lot of time, a lot of times that are being held on our calendars at this point. I'm assuming that not all of those are, will be full.
I don't know if Deidra.
Okay, we can get an update later.
But we, we can, we'll follow up on that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yep.
Besides Deidra's mic light up.
Oh, Deidra, Deidra can respond.
Hi, yes, Deidra. So I am hopeful after the executive session next week on the ninth, that we will be able to solidify the held dates on your calendars for general manager transition and get that firmed up and, and resolved for you.
Other commissioners, board wrap-up? Yes, Commissioner Brown.
I think we all know what a filibuster is. And that's when somebody just takes the mic and then you just keep talking and talking and talking. For those of you that don't know, John and I have a little sidebar about whether or not he convenes a meeting within the timeframe that's on the budget or not. We're within two minutes of it. And if we go three minutes, he's, it's going to cost him a big, huge, expensive dinner. And so I could sit here and talk for two minutes. I, I, I do want to take a serious moment and say, I know this is your last meeting, John, and I know that it's fun heard in cats. And I'd just like to acknowledge your leadership over the last year. And Mindy, your co-leadership, I would like to thank both of you for doing what I think is an exemplary job and the way that this board functions and works. And it's because you've got scabble and the, and the vice scabble, so to speak. And, and so thank you very much for that. I really appreciate you tolerating me. How much time we have? Are there thirty seconds? But anyhow, thank you very much and I'll, I'll, I'll end it with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Quickly, I think this is my first time on the board where we haven't, like, we've had a split vote. And I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's, the conversation that we bring to it and the respect that we all give to each other. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, John. And thanks to the board for allowing me to be president this last year. It's been fun being in leadership, being able to interact with the city in, in that role has been very rewarding. Thank you to Frank and staff for working with me to, and Mindy to help set these agendas. They do most of the work, they send it out and we, we look at it and go, looks good to me. So thank you for all the hard work that staff does. Sorry, we threw a monkey wrench into your resolutions, but that is democracy. And that's what you, that's why we are here is to help steer this boat. And John, I've got thirty seconds left to go.
I know, this isn't fair. This is totally not fair.
I can, I can honestly say now, this is not one of those boards that rubber stamps everything. This will be the example that we use for the next five years that say, hey, remember when you didn't approve something? Hey, John, did I talk long enough?
I think, I think it's all we got to do is get it timestamped at eight, eight forty-five and one second, we're good.
All right, with no other discussion, I will adjourn the meeting at eight forty-four PM.
Good evening.